All right, well, with that, I am going to six thirty two P M call this meeting to order. Uh, we're roll call Eric Val chef is here. Um, we'll go from bottom to top, Alan.
Here.
A A J.
Here.
Megan.
Here.
And Rihanna is on the way. All right, um, do I have, is there a review of the minutes? Uh, do I have a motion to approve? Four twenty nine, Alan. In second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Right.
Yeah, it's Carrie. Okay, um, and then, uh, we're into public comment, uh, mind, uh, the neighborly reminder, uh, comments related to three minutes, please sign in, you do not have to speak your address, but make sure it's signed in. Whether it's online or on the form here in the room. Um, three minute time limit as I mentioned, please refrain from personal tax, please refrain from up seeing language, please be neighborly and, um, this will all go one click. Um, so with that in mind, uh, any public comments?
Yep.
Very good. Great, what the X O P seven two four, I mean, I don't have one question, is that you guys plan on voting on the draft?
Thank you for your power.
Well, I have other questions to fix against.
Good point.
And I deserve the right to come back up.
That's the end of the main, there'll be three minutes for you as well. And public comment thing online. Big hands up online. Nope, all right, we'll move on, um. So number five is the business development meeting group updates.
Um, we had our third meeting last week, um, we're working and, um, working with the borough, waiting on the launch of the, uh, business directory, um, where, uh, groups, members of the working group are, uh, thinking about window clings, um, for shopping local around the community. Um, there are members working on, um, a welcome packet for new businesses and, uh, a couple of mixers planned for business owners and commercial property owners to get to know one another. Anything you would like to add, AJ?
The only thing I would add is that that is planned between now and the end of September, so those are our, that was, that's our six month agenda for the, for the, uh, working group.
Maybe just a quick comment, uh, this is Kennedy short, he's our borough intern for the summer, master's degree student in public administration and international studies. And just being a good person, um, so he's gonna be helping out a lot.
Thanks.
Nice to meet you, Kennedy, thanks for your help.
Yeah, thanks for your help already.
Yeah, no, you're welcome.
It's great, welcome. All right, um, thank you for the updates, a tremendous amount of work you guys have brought forward with in a very short amount of time, so thank you for getting that moving, it's great to see it really take shape, um. The next item is the trails committee update, um. Uh, Jimmy, wanna talk the award, the R P, the firm and, uh, where we are.
Yep, so, um, and I think we mentioned this at the last meeting, we have hired a firm, so we do have a firm in place, uh, G I A consulting to do the work. Um, and they have started, uh, basically public outreach. Um, I was sick for half of a week, uh, a week and a half ago, so we're a little, we got a little slow start on that. Um, but we have collected a bunch of key stakeholders in the community, thank you for everybody from the committee who provided us names. Um, and, um, I, I still have to get back to a few folks to add a few names. Um, and we will be putting out a survey, um, hopefully tomorrow, we already have it in the system and ready to go. Um, but we need to print flyers up and put them around town, we're gonna put them at all the trailheads with Q R codes and web, web links. Um, uh, and, um, uh, there is, well, there is a way to check, uh, to make sure the Q R codes are safe now too, so we can put that on the link just in case anybody's concerned about that. Um, but that should be going up, um, hopefully tomorrow, but at the latest on Thursday. Um, and then we do have a public outreach session on, uh, scheduled for June twenty third, Monday, June twenty third at six, uh, uh, six P M, I think it's six, it's at six P M. Um, so that will be going forward, and, uh, so this first round is really just collecting public app, public input. Um, uh, we've art, they've already had several stakeholder meetings or several stakeholder interviews. Um, now it's setting up, um, some focus groups and then the surveys, of course, will be another way to collect information. Um, and that should be, the next meeting for that is on, uh, next, excuse me, next Monday on June second. Um, uh, and we'll be going from there, so that's the update. So anybody have any questions about that, concerns? Um, I also make a note too, just because it's been on Facebook and several places, I've noticed there's been a lot of complaints about Clearview Trail not being open. Um, it is still closed, um, because Duquesne Light has not removed a pole and a wire bound across. We are not able to deal with that, we cannot remove that, um, we, the public works is not allowed to do it, county public works is not allowed to do it. Um, so we are waiting for Duquesne Light to fix it. Uh, we will be, uh, opening the upper portion of the trail now that the other, uh, downed wire has been removed. Um, and that should be happening, we put out a blast about it today, some information on Facebook and some information on Savvy, so uh, we hope to get that open, um, but at the latest by the end of the week, so.
Has he totally been responsive to like ask for timeline and that sort of thing that they?
Has Duquesne Light done?
Yeah.
No, they, I mean, with this storm, they were, they were buried in, 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 in a lot of work. Um, and frankly, I think they attacked it pretty fairly, which is they went for the biggest regions first, the third ward in Crafton was out for two days, um, whereas single houses, um, you know, have been out longer. Uh, now, I don't think there's any houses out in the area at all anymore, I think it's just now getting these things like trails and, um, you know, less, less urgent, uh, needs are being met at this point, so, um, we have put two, two emails and several calls into our government liaison, um, about the trail, um, we did hear from a resident that someone called the, uh, the hotline and they had said that no one had called, but we have called and emailed and we can provide those, they feel like some, it's just, I don't think people in, in their siloed field are talking to each other, so hopefully, um, hopefully we'll get that taken care of by the end of the week, hopefully they'll be out here by the end of the week, but I, I don't have a timeline yet for them.
Understandable. Um, I do wanna, um, clarify, uh, one thing, so the trails, the trail, um, update, it's a study where the borough was awarded a grant to pay for, uh, subject matter expert consultant. Um, to come and guide us through what's proper in going about this matter. Um, prior to this, outside of kind of local tribal knowledge, there hasn't been a formalized Crafton Trail System, um, so this is a big step forward in terms of building the internal capacity. So we understand as a borough staff, people needs to be done, not that you don't, but just to guide you through best practices. Um, as well as to plan for what this can mean, obviously walkability is one of the, um, the pillars of the thrive strategic plan, trails fit into that, connecting those, um, those spaces, um, is important. And certainly has a potential of impacting our home values, so it's a, it's a good win even for those who don't participate in the trail system. Um, with that in mind, um, I think it's eighteen members um, on a volunteer committee who all came forward on their own, um, the consultant is, uh, what is his name?
Uh, G A I.
Yeah, I do, yeah, they're a household name, even though I can't remember him, but, um, they're a household name in the space, they certainly have, uh, demonstrated, you know, very quickly that they have a plan, they know what they're doing, they've provided a good foundation here in the first, um, uh, the first couple of, couple of first meeting, you know. Um, so with that, um, we'll turn to, um, any, any discussion comments from the planning commission on the trail site. All right, um. So zoning, so for those following along from home, uh, we're able to download the packet online. Um, in the agenda tonight is a memorandum from the health director, Mike Tesco, um, that was put together by borough staff, um, they're gonna take us through a couple of pieces here. Um, we have some obligations that were omitted from the plan, um, and how to, how to look at the solid rap. Um, as well as some updates on the recent, we, I think we, we pushed tabled one item from last month to this month. Um, that we need to discuss and nail down, and then there'll be a summary, um, of where we are to date. Um, on the final page of the docket, um, that gives you kind of a, an idea of the things that were, um, that were done in the past month. Um, as well as, um, I wanna jump back in when it's time to talk about the, where we are since early twenty twenty two, since this began, so with that in mind, Mike, I'll turn it over to you. Any comments, uh, from the committee before we, um, all right, we should, before we get started, okay?
Okay, I'll, uh, Mandy's gonna do most of the talking here, she did most of the work, I'll just give some brief context, particularly to the first bullet point on the memo page in your packets. We got a cold email from an advocacy group, I believe it was an environmental advocacy group that said, hey, in your current code right now, uh, that we're currently operating under, you allow for mining, which is the correct way to do it. Uh, it's a permitted use within our industrial district, which is mostly borough owned properties. And they said, in your new code, you do not allow for mining, which puts you at in legal risk.
Can you define permitted use?
Uh, they can do it by simply pulling a permit essentially. It, it wouldn't take council approval necessarily, mining is a little different, but it won't necessarily take council approval, they can do it all through a permitting process. Uh, Jim got the email, he forwarded it to me, it said, Mike, check into this, I forwarded it to Mandy and said, Mandy, check into this, and the result of that is on page forty three primarily, where it's
Of the code.
Of, of that, yes, draft zoning code, roughly two and a half, three, up to three pages of, uh, very strenuous regulations for mining, uh, which is allowed by conditional use in the new draft of the code, so it's more restrictive, takes planning commission approval, takes council approval. And there's two and a half, three pages of actual regulations that apply to mining operations, so I will pause there and hand it to Mandy.
Yeah, no, Mike did a really good job of summarizing that, um, it just, it appears that it, in drafting the amendment, um, there was just an oversight in removing, uh, mining from the, uh, use table, the definition is still in there. Um, and the risk, and so right now, as we sit here, mining is permitted in the industrial use, meaning if a property owner goes to D E P and gets a permit, they can drill and operate a gas well without having to come to you guys unless there's some other local permits that are required, um. With excluding it all together, an argument could be made that a property owner could put a well anywhere they wanted because the state law requires a reasonable provision for mining, so to ignore it altogether opens up a challenge to say, well, I can put it wherever I want, so this is more, this allows for mining, but it is way more restrictive than what is currently allowed in the industrial district by making it a conditional use. They have to come, they have to apply, they have to provide a very detailed plan of what they intend to do, start and stop timeframes, they have to prove that they have the permit from D E P, that they maintain that permit from D E P. Any violations of that permit is, uh, could cause the borough to revoke their conditional use. If they're going to be harming the roads, uh, they have to enter a new agreement with the borough to compensate the borough for that. And so these, the proposed language, uh, recommends, it, it's gotta be ten acres or more, um, one thousand foot setbacks from any mining activities, so this adopts a lot of the statewide kind of recommended um, regulations when you do allow mining, which you have to, but you wanna make sure you're, um, controlling it as much as possible.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, so if I'm understanding that permitted use right now is they get a D E P permit, they don't have to pass go and craft and they can kind of do what they, what they need to do. Um, this changes it to being conditional use. Uh, meaning after they get a D E P permit, that doesn't mean they can start, they still have to come downtown to Crafton and they have to come through Craft and meet the criteria here, and that's for more risk because now there's land size restrictions and there's setback restrictions, which makes it very specific to what somebody is going to do, so we have to have it in there, but it's very stringent to, you know, very few opportunities, um, in Crafton Borough and the industrial zone. Okay, correct, all right, so, um, I believe we need a motion.
Yeah, sure enough, yeah.
Okay, the second.
Well, I would second.
Any discussion?
Um. Do you remember the group who had contacted us?
I have to look, I don't remember, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, fine.
I can look it up.
No further discussion.
Okay, um, so let's, uh, let's just make this one a roll call, um, Alan.
Uh, bye.
Uh, Al, A J.
Hi.
Megan.
Hi.
Rhiannon. Yeah, all right, Val chef is a yes. I as well, um, so it's unanimous with, um, Rihanna and Doc, President. Okay? All right, um, you wanna keep moving here, the, um, the next is the duration stay for S T R, short term rentals.
Yes, quick context, and then I'll hand it off to Mandy, at the last meeting, based on public, um, a public request, uh, there was a discussion around can we provide for additional regulations for what I call medium term rentals? Right now, short term rentals are essentially, short term rentals, transient housing are, the short phrase are, is Airbnbs, Verbos, something you can do in the neighborhoods, we do not have any laws on the books regulating those things right now within Crafton, so they operate in the absence of regulations essentially. But we did in the new code, this is one of the updates, we restricted them to commercial areas only, commercial districts only. And we'll treat them like hotel motels, so you can just do it if you're in a commercial area and, you know, hopefully they shop, uh, at, at the Blue Snail. But there is a question, uh, from last month. How long do we define a short term rental? Um, and, and so that's an open question for planning commission, and, um, and before I get off track, I wanna kick it to Mandy, cuz she really dove into this topic.
And, yeah, before you start, I just wanna check my recollection, cuz it was early days, but there was a lot of public discussion about the time, the length of time, the frequency, the back and forth, so what we arrived on as it's written, um, so far has been based on that input, so.
And I think a lot of that, um, the concerns that were raised, I believe, had to do with when it was going to be permitted in the residential districts, we're now moved to just the mixed use in the C T O D, so, um, it's almost like another business, it'll just in a residential structure, um, but last, last month, we had left open, um, should we combine, consider short term rentals and medium term rentals the same when regulating them, um, rather than having two separate sections, and I, I, our recommendation is that, yes, we do that because we really want to regulate them all the same anyway, so, um, it's just defining the time period that would be a short term rental, um. The traditional notion is thirty days, um, this medium term, uh, period is more like ninety days, so our recommendation would be that we call uh, all ninety day short, all ninety day rentals, transient housing or short term rentals. Um, and in the zoning ordinance, we can regulate things like the number of people who can be there, we wanna make sure that they're not, uh, there's not more than the maximum that would be permitted by law, we can regulate, um, lighting, noise, parking, uh, anything else as far as registration and the registration process and inspections of those short term rentals will have to be a separate ordinance. So the definition, um, that we have proposed in here subject to determining the, the time period, um, also, it just generically says that they have to comply with all regulations of the borough, including, oh, thanks, including any rental registration requirements, um, noise, property maintenance codes, the number of guests cannot exceed what the, what would be permitted by the fire code. Parking has to comply with, comply with any residential building parking requirement in the district of any, um, and that's really it, because since they're gonna be in the business districts, um, and the borough may likely deal with the registration separately, um, the most important thing here is just defining what that is, what the, what the rental period is.
And can you tell me what page that's on, that is page one twenty eight. One twenty six. That's done at the bottom of the definitions. Oh, sorry.
We moved it from the conditional use, um, section because now it's permitted.
Still, I'm, what I'm recalling, I'm looking for is there were two, two different types of wording that I recall in the numbers, and I just didn't have a chance to get back, I just checked it. Um. What was the one that said no more than six offered?
We did away with that requirement and couldn't, and instead of that, have made it just subject to the applicable fire code, yeah.
Both before, okay, thank you. I have more questions, so is thirty, so thirty days is, so as, as I read this, what you're saying is ninety days total?
Correct, anything ninety or below would be considered transient housing.
And with the addition of these regulations, what happens to operating B and Bs in residential neighborhoods?
They are and will continue to be considered unlawful uses.
Still trying, and I'm trying to recall from the other one, was it from the previous one? It was twenty five percent of the time, and this is more restrictive.
So for residential neighborhoods, it's not committed on, yeah.
It's gone, that's, that's completely gone, yes, yeah, just making sure I'm and ninety days makes sense in it, was that?
Any other questions for Mandy? All right, do we need to motion to incorporate, or is this already, um, a matter that's been incorporated?
I think a motion for ninety days would be great.
I'll motion it.
All right, AJ, I'll second. All in favor?
Bye.
All right. One else. Worth three on and? No, she's not, yeah. That's right. When do you think that these, um, well, right now, the mining red line and this, when will this be adapted into the public display version on the internet?
Certainly within the next couple of business days, all I have to do is hit accept and, and get it on the internet, so, yeah, pretty, pretty quick. But the, the long, the kind of the longer tailed item is updating the maps per whenever we approve changing the conservancy parcels that we discussed, so we have to update those maps.
Right. All right, that takes us to unlawful uses, two twenty five, two D.
Yeah, so when I looked at this language originally, seemed to suggest that even a current and existing unlawful use would going forward be considered a lawful use, so we just cleaned up the language to make it clear that only existing lawful uses that may in the future become, uh, nonconforming, may continue, if you're an illegal use now and you continue to be an illegal use, you're not somehow grandfathered in.
Illegal is illegal. All right, um, again, do, is this a, is this need a motion since it's illegal, it's, it's already wrote there, there, okay, um, and then the restrictions of building exempt from regulations two twenty five.
I'll do a quick context on this, this was a citizen request that was approved at last meeting, so we don't need a motion. That's just, um, section two two five, uh, sets regulations for borough property, or I'm sorry, public property development. And Mandy did a lot of good research on this, I will yield to her specifics on it.
Yeah, the, um, the current code that we're in the process of amending limits the exception to public utilities following, after hearing where the public utility commission can, confirms that the, for whatever reason, they don't have to comply with the borough requirements, and we're just, we're leaving that language as is, nothing's changing, nothing's broadening the exemption, um, or anything like that, so we just updated the draft code to reflect what was approved last month.
So what that, what that means, that the change for all practical purposes is whatever the borough chooses to build has to go through a normal process, there is no emergency process.
Jim, do you find that, um, in any way unaccept, un, unworkable in terms of?
No, that's vulnerable operation, it shouldn't be an issue, I mean, they have to go through, I mean, council has to meet anyway, and they're gonna be talking about anything that they're doing, so it's fine, yeah.
Yep. All right. And then, uh, any other discussion around this one, two twenty five and eleven? And then we move on to the maps, um, and updating the maps from the last meeting, I know that Thomas Street, it's only, the map right now is completely up to date for anyone that wants going on it online, except for Thomas Street.
Correct.
Um, which is C R, um, and, and what is it listed now?
Mixed use right now, it's actually gray out right now, it's not, it's not designated, yeah.
Right, so the determination last meeting was to make it C R, um, and then, um, the grand, grand view conservancy parcels themselves, um, which were conservative.
They were originally conservancy, then switched to mixed use, and now switch back to conservancy. I'm sorry, community residential. Thank you.
Um, so that's just an update, there's a motion, there's nothing, the same thing, when do you foresee?
We should have those, I had to get a new computer, so we, it was, I, I was bogging it down, so we should have it, uh, we should have it by next week.
All right, um, any other questions on those bullet items, we're gonna move on to the related requests. Um, so we have tried to make it a point of policy here, um, to bring in every request that we have gotten, whether in this chamber, in the community events, um, in email format and others, people come by the borough office, um, this is just since, um, a month and a week, just, um, oh, this is just, this is the update as of five twenty, all right, um, do you wanna go through this, I think it's worked a while to go through the entirety of the list, um, just to kind of look at some of the things that are here, um, some of it, just, we can just go quickly through, removing allowance for A D U's from the code. So in the entirety of the code, there's nowhere where you can find, um, the ability for accessible dwelling units. And that has been approved as removed from the code. Um, there was an allowance to put A D U's in certain circumstances back into the code, um, we have denied um, that, um, from being appropriate back into the code. Um, the eligibility for, and I wanna, if someone would provide some context, so I have it straight, daycare homes, uh, seven to twelve children with an N R and C R, so you can have daycare um, and N R and C R circumstances, but it's capped at six children. Right, so there's no way to get to seven to twelve, um, certainly nothing beyond twelve, uh, uh, even some of them. Right, um, Airbnbs in residential districts.
Eric, I would just like to, to just comment, we, yeah, 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 that really the issue was when you have seven to twelve children, it's a much bigger deal for a neighborhood. Yep, and so that was the request to move it out, so that was the, that was the background in that as well, we settled on just to, so is, it will be, uh, I just wanted to check your, um, last, that the daycare home seven to twelve is within N R and C R. So. That's, yeah, right.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, say that one more time, I was.
Well, he said there'll be, I just wanted to check here, the first thing I wanted to make was that, that was the original request that it came because that was too many in the neighborhood residential.
Correct.
Community residential, and that makes sense to us, and so now that's mixed use or C T O D.
That's correct, yes.
The second one was, if they're in mixed use or C T O D, is it capped at twelve?
It's capped at twelve, seven.
So that's what I that's what I'm gonna try.
It might be capital, but isn't there another, there's another designation of a nursery, but yeah, there's another category of a different, of what's called a school, and that is permitted.
That is right, right, thank you.
Yeah, I think the salient point here is this is a business operating out level. Yeah, I think the salient point here is this is a business operating out level.
Correct, correct.
Right, right, so a daycare operation, we have some.
Right. Correct, that's great clarification, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Um, good, great question, please, any, anything else on that one? All right, we found that number four, remove Airbnb's from residential districts, this is NR CR. Um, Airbnb's have been removed, I mean, that we have proved, we've removed it. Um, they are businesses, they are permitted within the, the commercial districts, which is transit oriented, um, and districts. Which is a classification. Right. Um, hey, discussions, thoughts, comments, okay? Uh, require Airbnb's to register as a business. Um, so currently Airbnb's that may or may not operate, um, within the core laws of traffic. Are they required to register as a business?
They're not.
They're not, so this is, this would be new. Um, and the borough has the methods and the means to be able to handle it when somebody wants to start Airbnb and goes to um, portion of districts. I'll see them. Great, okay, um, uh, any thoughts special around that approval, all right, um, the noise language, um, there wasn't parity, um, in some of the codified pieces that are in how we have a construction and all that other kind of other places where noise comes up. Um, so the tiny wavelength refers to the fact that you, we're not in conflict with, you know, what supersedes what others, so now there's a single way to handle it. And it ticks the ties, it's, it has parity with, uh, surrounding communities, um, it's equal to surrounding communities, I believe. Um, and so now it's, it's approved and that language is, has been in there for actually quite a while now, um, that's questions, thoughts around the noise language? All right, um, I know we went into this like, uh, flag lighting, um, exemptions, um, it is something that we deny, um, um, that's right, and some of the comments. Thoughts on flag line? Uh, height limits, the yard fencing, uh, we approved, um, and this mostly dealt with the side yard restrictions because there was no clear height limit side.
Right, side, yeah.
Right, that was right. Um, and, uh, the approval of increasing a lot of dimensions on the multifamily NCR, um, structure of multifamily to sixty feet, um, so you have perhaps sixty feet if you want to apply um, the multifamily structure, and that's only in, uh, NCR, correct. Now, that's changing the residential portion of Division Street to CR from CTOD. Um, this is the segment of the street that kind of applies to those homes that are there. Um, I don't think they had any regular visit, but we got it at length, and there are a number of maps and there are a lot of, uh, public input there as well, thank you. Uh, request to maintain six square blocks adjacent to downtown is NR as opposed to changing to C off. Um, we approve this, anyone have any comment? On this, again, this is something we, we really dug into, which this clearly comes out, really won't put um, on the last vision session, I think was probably the most, uh, uh, the most impactful part of that. And maintaining, well, we just talked about this, and this is, this is not in the map, this will be in the map soon. So it's, it's for you to fix, um, the request to maintain Thomas Street as CR and not move it to mixed use. So it's surrounded on all sides by mixed use, but that portion of the street, um, it was sealed. Um, the request to maintain conservancy district designation, again, we just talked about this, this specifically applies to uh, to Grand View, um, the, the way the thought was, you know, by making it, um, uh, residential, it does give people the ability to improve if they're law, which is flat. Um, but it still, because of the other ordinances in place, it's impossible to build on a grade, um, that was in the back, but to make that kind of double down on it, if you will, um, or maybe let CR. Um, so unfortunately, those people will not be able to improve the front side if they want to, um, because they are similar. Right, okay, um, so we approved that based off of public input. Um, and then the change of the old ball field, maybe all properties to active park, um, this is, um, um, this is something I think is pretty challenging to do, what are they listed as now?
Residential.
They're residential.
There are two.
Arcs and, arc two, yeah. All right, um, and so there's just no way that we can do that, that was a legal issue denied because we weren't allowed to do that.
Well, that's more of a cancel. But, counsel, we should, counsel asked.
Um, and were public building exemptions to only emergencies? Change the word from public building adventures to only emergencies, that was approved. Um, and then just, again, that was one of the bullets that we just covered tonight, any special around that since that one, it's a little bit newish. All right, and then reduce some of the watt works to twenty-five feet, this has been one that's been misunderstood in the public for some time now. Um, we looked at it, we looked at various strategies where maybe it does make sense. Um, and we ultimately did deny, uh, the reduction in the watt widths to areas of twenty-five feet. Um, so that is, that is not something that's in the code and we got denied, um, out of the right? All right, and, oh, special on that one?
No, I said if we're keeping it as is, so, or you guess?
Uh, yeah, it's forty and it will be maintained, that's what, yes, yeah, that's right, yeah. Um, had the readability, I think it was stable, so thank you for letting me do, to assess, for some of us that aren't worried to put the policies. All right, um, any, uh, any thoughts on that? Oh, thank you, um. All right, um, so with that, um, I just wanna I wanna go now, I am not gonna read the thirty-two things that are on the last page of tonight's stuff. Um, I do wanna, uh, prelude it, um, what is number one here? Um, there's a claim that's already in here. Um, zoning was something that was taken up by, uh, council and the planning commission, um, long before this. Um, our last zoning rewrite was in two thousand four? Is that correct?
Correct.
Two thousand four. And so somewhere around two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, it was talked about as, oh geez, this is something we should be why. Um, because we went through a strategic plan update. And many of the things that came into the thrive strategic plan especially well, which is to recap walkability, fighting light, um, and economic development. Having more crafting dollars, stay within crafting, having more external dollars spent within crafting, et cetera, economic development, so those were the three big pillars um, of the thrive plan, and the outcome from the experts at that is in order to really implement some of the stuff. Um, our old code, and this is what happens um, in any municipality over time, um, there are things that get changed in the zoning. And changes get made, there are circular references that really don't make sense, don't line up, and no pick and tie. So as a matter of practice, um, you really need to update your zoning every, what's best practice, Jim, ten years?
By, uh, for zoning, uh, there's no best practice for zoning, it's more about comprehensive plans, but if your comprehensive plan should be updated about every ten to fifteen years. And it does, typically that will suggest whether it's a good idea or not to update. And that, well, did come out of the thrive plan, you know?
Yeah, um, so all that, uh, put together, um, the borough then began shopping for a grant to get some help on zoning, um, we partnered um, with the Borough of Ingram, and the big focus of, of the, the zoning at the time was really focusing on what can we do, um, to stimulate economic development within the Crafton Ingram Shopping Center, what people refer to as the overlay district back in those days. Um, so partnership was formed, the grant was awarded by the
BCD?
BCD, um, which is a state agency, um, which we really appreciated the help. Um, and both us and Ingram proceeded with the same consultant, it went up to RFP, was set funding, engaged a professional who does this for a living, um, that was shared between, but we were doing the same code. Um, but we were doing our toes both at the same time, and hopefully there would be cross pollination around the overlay between the two, which was the shopping center. Um, so by twenty twenty-two, uh, the RFP had been awarded, consultant had been engaged, um, new visiting sessions, um, this was supported to some extent by planning commission. Um, but was run by the consultant and an independent, um, group, uh, zoning steering committee that had been formed later that year. Um, and this was really run by the consultant and the steering committee. Steering committee did have, there was one representative from planning commission, I had two representatives from council um, on the steering committee, um, but it was overwhelming and populated, obviously, by people who like any craft and business owners and crafty, et cetera. Um, so that's where we are, and so over the course of, um, prior to the, you know, what's listed here of August of twenty twenty-two, um, up until, you know, the day of twenty twenty-five, um, we have had a number of outreach surveys. Um, you know, some, some of the people in this room, I, I know you were on the, the, the steering committee. Um, we've had a lot of opportunities for public engagement. Um, and so the process now, um, is we've collected, um, I don't wanna say exhaustingly because it sounds tired, but we've collected, um, we've tried to be compre- to be comprehensive um, in collecting your feedback, the public feedback um, into this plan, it was written by experts, it was consulted by people who were here that came forward as part of the committee, um, and we have a, 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 a pretty good set of code, it's been um, reviewed legally a couple of times now, Mandy, uh, really fine tuning some of the details right now, which is terrific. Um, and we've, we've had a number of opportunities to try try and capture all the feedback from the community, we'll, um, I don't know of anything that we have within legal means, um, having bought in, if anything's been brought to the chamber, we would try um, to look at it a couple of different ways, not just one view, but multiple views, and trying to make what's best for Crafton to align to the thrive strategic plan. Um, and we're to that point now, we've, we've collected all of that, um, all of that feedback. Um, we are a stop in the, um, well said, Mandy, uh, the draft, uh, zone plan. Um, we do not approve. We are a recommendation, we're a party body, we make the recommendation, and we're getting to the point where, um, we've collected the feedback, there will still be as this moves up to council, as it moves to, uh, county review, legal review, public review. Um, there are many stops left on the train and many opportunities for public feedback and public engagement, should, should something be missed or some clarification. Um, but there is only so much that planning commission um, has been, has, has been, I think we've done quite a bit. Um, but there's, there's, there's a point where we have exhausted that we think that we can do, and we think we're approaching that. Um, I don't know, um, what else needs to be done. But Mandy, I wanted to ask you, um, we're coming to a time where we need to recommend this, right, the state gave us money to implement this, and we have done our part engaging with public to implement. Um, at some point, the state wants to see a return on its investment, um, and see our code be, uh, so in update, be implemented. Um, so in order for this to happen, we need to make a recommendation to council to do. Um, can you help us in terms of what, what should that look like? Um, and what would that, um, what would entail, et cetera, like?
Sure, so the, the motion, uh, would be to recommend that Borough Council adopt the amended zoning ordinance. Really, with all the, with all the amendments that you all have put forward and, and, and applied, once the, once they're all accepted in the, uh, working document, the motion would be to recommend that Borough Council approve the amended zoning ordinance.
So I'm gonna put to this bike and say, um, knowing that there will be public engagement, that no court will just not be transparent. Um, at what point, um, is this group comfortable in entertaining such a motion? What else do you need to sit in? Um, in order for us to, to move this forward, any comment?
Um, I'm comfortable. I think I'm comfortable when you're moving forward in, probably next month, um, but I would like the next meetings agenda and hopefully within next week or so for there to be the revised plan that has all of these changes, and then that, um, simple you know, so easily worded, like, what did the code say, what does it say now that we had made a few months ago, um, to be included, um, be updated with these inclusions, and then the agenda, I think, to just, you know, make hold it, no asterisk, will be voting on the recommendation to council, and then probably within the agenda packet, some of that information on that now, right? What, what this recommendation means, what the timeline is, where it goes then, and, um, just that background, that's what I think I'd do.
So what I'm hearing is a complete draft, no more changes. Up to date draft, um, in advance of a meeting where they clearly send it to you know, Mr. Wasak, you guys approve it? I don't know, I'm ready to approve it, I'm loving it up to. Um, so you're saying that with everything updated for the public to plainly see where it is in its completed draft form, um, before it moves on to its next stop, which will be council to then further refine, um, or to do what they see fit with it, um, anyone else?
I guess one of the things that I would, I would offer is that, um, in looking at this and pulling this together, I do think it's, um, helpful for me first of all to know how people is moving, is that the, um, the resident requests, if I counted correctly, there were thirteen accepted, four denied, but denials were also in support of citizen input in at least three of the four. And one I'm not sure of.
That is correct.
So I would think that everything that has been brought to us has been addressed affirmatively, so that is another reason I'm feeling comfortable with whoever you are.
Um, I'm also very comfortable where we are, um, I think well, it's now my second meeting, uh, but I've spent a significant amount of time pestering the staff, um, to get me up to speed and, um, and it's, it's it's been a very long process. And unfortunately, it's been a process where it's veered offline, off of the topic, to get into some negative things, I won't talk about those. Um, but it does, there's been some things like that that happened, they're grossly unfair. Grossly unfair. However, but back to the technical work of the document and seeking public opinion, I think it's been incredibly thorough. And well done, and profession. Um, and I'm, I'm happy to, uh, support booing today, if, if that's the wish of the group, if folks might agree, um, that's the wish of the group, that's mine, so I'd be happy, I'm very happy with where we are, pending the incorporation of the final little changes that you've approved of them.
Yeah, I, I hope that, um, all the feedback has been, um, been involved in this since, um, um, since its inception, um, but um, I do think, um, a couple of things in, in my comment, before I say it was more, uh, was it, maybe does anybody else have anything to say on this? Okay, um, so, um, I do think that we should make every attempt to have all planning commission present, right? Right, um and if that's, you know, calling in from a campsite in North Dakota, that's calling in from the campsite in North Dakota. Um I do think that it's time. Um I look forward to the public comment um after this meeting to see if we're grossly missing something, but I think that we've. Listen to all the comments that we that we, you know, we address all the comments that I think we've received. Um so what I would like to do um is, I don't know that we need a motion for this because I can control the agenda product, we will. Um but what I would like to do is take the the motion that you just helped us draft and place that as. Let's say the singular item um on next month's meeting, um just to be clear. Um so it's not distracting, not not that the business, we we can, we can.
So we can still do it up there.
We we can get the business committee up there too, because we have worked so hard, um but the trust setting will not have an update, um our next meeting is not till next, next week and. You know, there won't be much of an update um by, so I don't think that there's anything else. Um to inflate the time so that the entirety of next meeting is simply do we, do we uh want to uh make that motion? Um and then have vote? Well. Okay?
I would like to request that my eye, I should request this to be made on the agenda, so we make that on the holiday month's agenda, please.
That was the planning commission training conversation.
That's fine, all right, Eric, that's fine, it's not time sensitive, so I just want to make sure.
But but given that, given that we just completed number seven with an action item.
Correct.
Uh no motion is moved, um and we do have this nice little before uh public comment, we do have new business. Would you like to take that on and do business this evening?
Yeah, I would, no, um thank you, I would prefer to be prepared to.
Oh, I I got it, I said, I thought you were prepared tonight and I shut you down, so.
No, I just wanted to make sure that he doesn't get close by too far out, because I think I had some very good learnings, I attended a. A P M I, I don't know, P M P E I um program for planning commissions and. There were a number of things that I found particularly useful, I wanted to make sure to share those publicly, uh and also heard more, so I want to. I would have that on an agenda.
Okay.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, no, that's all right, I just wanted, I I understood.
Yeah, I just like, I want to make sure that, you know, we're, 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 we're doing our best to listen, um but um. It's now time to 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 take action here. And I think that this is a, this is a fine path forward. Um if everybody's, you know, I I'm comfortable voting right now, I I don't think that we need to. If everyone's more comfortable waiting for a full uh four plus, a full uh uh full house here, we can wait for next month or do that.
Yeah, I just, I feel strongly that our agenda should be that we're taking the recommendation vote. Then, I think for everyone's sake, I think I've mentioned that meetings in passing, I think we're taking a vote on should be hold it and. All size or asterisk whatever to say, that's just the practice that I'm used to in Florida, so.
And I would, I would also prefer that we end and be involved, so that's why.
That's fine. New business, any other new business? Well then, we're uh we're gonna turn this over um to public comment, um. I will ask that if you want to come up and speak, please put your name and address on the sheet, you do not have to speak your address when your time to speak is upfront. We understand the privacy issue and social media and all the electronics that are in the world. Um but we do need you to to bring yourself in, speaking is limited to uh Crafton residents and property owners. Um it is limited to business owners, um. Um and it is limited to serenists, um and we will, Mandy, I'll ask you to let the tire for us, please. Um and always and anything in this chamber, please refrain from personal attacks, so language be neighborly. That's it. Uh there are some people online, but nobody agrees with it, if you're online, the white speaks and people raise your hand, you can put it into the chat, um your address. Um to do not, uh I need you to speak your address, but we need to capture it somehow, so. Um with that said. Any public comment? Yes, sir.
You have to go first.
Greg Wasnac seventeen seventy three forever, with that.
And so you could go first because you have a blue shirt over.
Anyway, uh Greg Wasnac seventeen seventy three Bar Avenue, um last meeting I brought up, in fact, this is a pretty big code. And we've touched on um a very, very small part of it, um information out to the people. Are a very small part of what we've touched on so far, um. So, and I think it's, um I know Eric, you want to get it moving and um I thought if you're. I asked that in the beginning because I was not, if you aren't going to vote on it or push it forward. I wasn't gonna have this discussion, but anyway, uh there are other things in the code, like um solar panels.
Sure.
Solar panels. So, were solar panels allowed?
So solar panels are.
All right, right, right. Where, how far from the property line, how far off ground, on roofs, where are they allowed?
It's, it's specific, yeah, it's specific. I mean, I don't remember off the top of my head, but.
Right, 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 so I, okay, um how about uh sports facilities in in your backyard, what's allowed?
Uh, I'm I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Sports facilities, um in your backyard, what's allowed in your backyard, what kind of sports facility?
There's a list of accessory uses regarding sports facilities.
Right, so I mean, so the, you guys uh uh want to move this forward, I I want to move it forward, I want to have the greatest code we can have. But I also want the public to realize what could be allowed, um. You know, solar panels are allowed ten feet off the ground, ground panels are allowed ten feet off the ground up to three foot next to the property line, so someone. So, what's that?
So you know what's in.
I do know what's in there and so I'm asking this, um so I'm asking to see what you know it's in there, um. And so anyway, but I'm just, I'm only making this as an example that. You guys have your fingers on us all the time, the public really doesn't have their fingers on us all the time, I think it would be. Better that each piece of the code, the public was formally educated on. Uh so that they could have comments, so maybe people don't know what to ask, we went through a whole list of things that the public has asked. But those were hot items, those were the hot items that we spent a year and a half on, a few hot items. Um there's a lot more in this code that affect a lot of people. And a lot of backyards and in a lot of businesses that has not been even mentioned. And those things should be, there should be some sort of a education panel on this, um. The Eric, your old, your earlier um planning commission, you guys used to do about online workshops. And that was, those are fantastic, I mean, every, I got in on those and everything and I, and it was great, you you went through line by line. Taught people what was gonna be on, what was in each one of the workshops, you did it for the sewer commission, I mean the um uh. Fantastic stuff, um I just think that this is a huge, huge item that we've only touched on hot items. And that there's a lot more in it, so I'm just asking that um. That please put something together to educate the public line by line on what's going on.
Rover, three minutes.
Thank you, Greg. This is someone online, uh Greg, did you sign in just like? No, no, we're good, just all we have.
Um to kind of speak and follow up with like Greg a bit, um in terms of like the whole kind of timeline. A lot of those are early meetings, so Greg and I were both on the zoning uh zoning uh steering committee meeting. And um those were mostly populated with just me, Greg, Kirsten and Jim. So yes, there might have been a real long list of a whole bunch of people that were signed up to be a part of it, but it really was just a discussion with us four. Um and we didn't see eye to eye, we pretty much talked about two or three things for the duration of that time together. So while this has been taking time, um it's just because from the get go, it hasn't been kind of like properly run. Um and the community input that we're now getting was, or should have kind of been happening since the beginning and it didn't. Um so to kind of characterize it as like, it's been going on too long, therefore it must end, it was like, well, it was a bit of a rough start. Um with about a year worth of meetings, um just populated by, um and once again, Greg, myself. Kirsten, Jim, and then uh Matt Griner was there for the first half.
Um there was also um uh the owner of Seraphino's, the was at many of them, Kelly, Kelly was at most of those. Were online, not in person, but online for many of those, and Coletta came to many of those as well.
Thought it came to, um and so that's the thing to kind of keep. In mind is that, yes, we are looking at it now, but the idea is that we want more people to kind of see it, because that's, that's kind of been the problem since the very beginning is that. Um people haven't been educated properly, um and then it's, you know, kind of dragged a bit, um so I would just say. Just maintain the idea that it started real small, it started real rocky, it started real rough, um so I, I get a test. I was yelled at, you know, like times during that those um meetings, so. That's something that I deal with, so that's that.
So I, 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 all right. Online?
Yep. So we are, you are able to speak.
Everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, Cody Sheets, one fifty two Promenade. Um I have, uh I'll ask the um my my question just to to save time here and and uh I I I just have. Two questions and then and then a comment. First question is, um can you confirm for me what the curb setbacks are in the current ordinance? Um and if they are changing, what are they uh for new builds? Um and can you also confirm for me whether. Uh we are still eliminating square footage requirements for new builds down to the occupancy permit for the building. Um and my comment um really kind of coincides. Uh with with the uh the comments before me is, you know, like. The, the, even though there's, this has been going on for years, all the way back to thrive. Um the fact of the matter is that like people don't know what's going on, um and despite how many. You know, public engagements over the years that may have been had, the fact is, is that like hundreds of changes have happened to this draft within the last. Year uh or um eleven, thirteen months now, um and it is impossible. For residents to understand what all those changes are, what has been uh changed from, you know. The beginning to to right now, um and so, you know, you know, Megan had talked about. Uh writing a list of things that had changed from the last ordinance to this one, I think that writing a list also is. What is, what is the current ordinance now, what is this proposed ordinance going to change? About the current ordinance and um I I I think it's impossible to have that, like I said, have people educated. Um on what those changes are in two public engagements. Um one that was supposed to be formal and then ended up not, or informal, and then ended up being very formal. Um I I I really, really feel strongly about just, and I'm not trying to extend this any further either. I want a good code too, I want a good uh zoning code, I want business development, I want this town to thrive. Um but I also want the people that live here to know exactly what's going on and so going through this as painstaking as this, it may be. Um it is planning commission's job to make sure that people are educated as much as possible and so going through this line by line. With uh the public in workshops, whether it's one workshop, three, five, ten. Um I I I just, I feel very strongly about that, I think that you're gonna find that uh over the next month. You know, before uh this comes up on the agenda to potentially vote on it, you're gonna, you're gonna find that a lot of people feel the same way, thanks, that's all I got.
Yeah, one of them.
I didn't sign, but I will sign on you soon.
Okay. Say your name, put your address in when you sign in later.
Got it.
Hi, it's Pam Polk, I live on Division Street, um I'm just gonna take a swing in just a slightly different direction. Um I just want to thank you all, uh planning commission, steering committee, for all of the work that you've been putting into this, um I think it. I see it, I think just from being an observer, um so I just want to say thank you for the work that you're putting in. Um I feel as if you are, have been clear and staying to the goals that came from Thrive. So yeah, and this is just a thank you and appreciation, I also want to say, America, I really appreciate kind of walking through the timeline, I think that that's always helpful to have a little. History and context when it's coming to. What has shaped this work, so that was it, I just wanted to say thank you for the work that you're doing and I appreciate your. Openness and willingness to hear so much from the community and I think Mr. Sheets mentioned about a comparison document, which I. Think maybe there is something similar to that about what people have asked for. What is current, what is not current, so I think something like that exists, but um again, just want to say thank you for all the work that you're putting into this.
There is somebody else online.
Request was your request, correct? Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you like me to have the person online?
Nicole, that's raised her hand, yes.
Okay, Nicole, you are able to speak.
Hi, thank you, uh can you hear me?
Yes.
So Nicole Curvin, uh one eight four South Grandview Avenue. Uh you've talked about the efforts made to date and that is all very much appreciated. Um however, efforts should always be to satisfy objectives and I see some objectives that have not yet been met. We've yet to see an impact analysis as to whether these changes will negatively impact the following. Property values, um and how much these zoning changes would expose Crafton to speculation by real estate development. Uh these are just some of the concerns that have been raised by residents, I think the objectives requested by the public. Need to be addressed, uh they were formally requested, for example. Uh how these changes tie to a specific business plan for Crafton with clear justifications. Or for example, how these changes will impact infrastructure costs, taxes, parking. Population density and public service demands, we do not have a strategy in place to my knowledge for active monitoring of the impacts of the changes as well. I've also not seen uh this, even though the public has requested accountability measures more than once. I would like to ask that everyone involved in recommending and passing the zoning plan in good faith. Recuse themselves from being involved in any real estate development or kickbacks associated with these zoning changes permanently. For all time in the Borough of Crafton, that is what I would do, I would be happy to do it. Uh if I was involved and to ensure accountability with the public, given all that has come to pass. I think that would go a long way toward reestablishing trust, thank you.
Thank you, cool. Um it's noted, any other comments? Oh, come on up.
I'm sorry, can Nicole, can you come back on, can I just ask you to wait for one second, do you mind? Nicole, can you clarify that one sentence that you said, I just want to make sure that I understand it about all in perpetuity, because I. I just, I was trying to listen well to that, could you just state that again, please?
Uh sure, um I would like to ask that uh everyone involved in recommending and passing the zoning plan in good faith recuse themselves. From being involved in real estate development or kickbacks associated with these zoning changes for all time in the Borough of Crafton. That is something that I would do if I was involved and I would be happy to do it. To ensure accountability with the public, given all that has come to pass, I think it would establish trust.
Thank you, Nicole, I didn't, I didn't um understand it that way, so I'm glad I asked you to clarify. And I think as we've said before too, also right to know has also determined uh nothing of that nature today, so that would be no problem. It's not, not what any of us are into, so.
We also file statements of financial interest that disclose our real estate.
Exactly, so all of those things are well in line with what we are already doing, so uh no problem at all, thank you. Hi, that is from my perspective.
Good.
Yep.
Linda Wasniak seventeen seventy three Bar Avenue, um I know there was a list from the last. Um group convening um public meeting that was kind of a little loose out there, but. We had a whole list of questions that I believe went to Jim, the Borough Council and perhaps Mike, I'm not sure. Have all those been responded to, have each of those concerns been addressed?
Yeah, most of those questions were not zoning related, so. I, for my part, I didn't feel compelled to address them specifically within the context of this conversation, kind of back to Alan's point, but. Happy to answer any questions that are not zoning related, zoning related, whatever, whatever.
A list and there were multiple residents, I'm just asking if those residents got responses, received response.
I don't know if there was names, so.
They were given names, so what was, if if my understanding is correct, we were not given names, but.
So you're saying that document replaces that?
No, I'm saying, this is, I'm saying it responds to it. So it responded.
Correct, no, that's a great.
This document responded to all the questions that we got, we were not given. We were not given names, so we could not personally do any responses.
Some did not provide them, the ones that did were provided directly. If they said Susan Smith, it was, it was placed on there, so.
News to me.
Yeah, I didn't, we didn't have names on either of the documents we received from question. I can send you the emails, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's all we have.
One more, one more.
Karen Tom, check Park Street. Um, I just have a question about um number fourteen here, change the old ball field into the mini ball and that was denied. Can I ask why that was denied when there were so many, so much of the public was in favor of that?
Um, that is, the council has asked that we not change that at this time.
Oh, that's when you say council, so now so so it's, so it's the ones that are stopping that, okay. Okay, thank you.
And currently that is residential, um, and it is remaining um residential.
C R, yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Um, if uh if for any reason you had something to say and didn't feel comfortable coming forward or we somehow missed you. Um, uh, planning commission has an email address. Um, I for one am not on social media, so that's not any way to get a hold of me. Um, I um I encourage anyone to stop by the borough office. Um, you know, Mike, you are reachable, Jim, you are reachable. Um, contact information, everything that we possibly can do to engage with you is um on the 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 Crafton website um and um the Crafton Planning Commission sub section. Um, with that in mind, um, we will, I would certainly encourage, if there are bigger things that somehow that we've missed and have omitted, um, this would be the time um to make sure that you bring our attention to it. Um, because at this point, we have um, we have asked at 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 many times for that feedback, but this is only a stop from the planning commission. This will go to the council, from the council, it will go to the county, it will go through legal review. It will then have a public window of display for open comment again, at which point then and only then can it actually be moved by council um into an adopted ordinance um codified in Crafton. So we're a long ways away from that and there are certainly lots of opportunities along the way for us to educate. Um, people hear about it, um, and still uh move forward within the process. I'm not trying to hurry this, I'm just trying to make sure that we have um uh done our part in accepting um the the funding from the state and and a to really uphold uh the Crafton thrive. So with that, it's like there's one more comment before entertaining motion to dismiss.
Uh, just one comment to defer to the overall process. So after there's, after it goes from council to the county and then that public, I'm a period where that the council then votes on it again, is that it? That how that works, they vote at like a second time to actually approve it after that public comment period?
Yeah, I I may have hand waved a little bit over that. You want to talk that through for for those of us that uh that hand waved for a living?
Yes, there's two public comment periods on public notice periods that we are legally required to publish. I got a guilty manatee for the rest of it.
Um, and I think we'll check, yeah. It go, there's the public comment period advertising that there's going to be hearing. Um, in the meantime, it goes to the county for any feedback. Once the county feedback um comes back, then the borough holds a public hearing, um, at least one, if they feel that they need more, they they are free to do so. Um, but there'll be at least one public hearing.
And if the borough like changes the plan again, that then like restart the process over again?
If it's significant enough, it'll come back here.
If, who who determines that it's significant enough? The county is like, I just, I may be silly in the weeds, but like what what triggered it being significant enough?
Council would make that determination.
Okay, the council goes, yeah, we made some changes, minor, we're all good to keep going, or they go, that's pretty significant, we have to send it back. Okay, or thank you.
Yep. All right, if we have everyone and if I offended anybody with exhausted, I'm I'm not, I'm not feeling it. Not fair, my this being with you completed apprehensive. Um, with that in mind.
I think like a motion to adjourn.
I I I hear a need for a second.
Second.
All right, all fair.
All right.
Happy next one.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.